I'd like to call to order the May 24th meeting of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. Welcome to everyone that's here. If you've got things to say, there are appropriate places in the agenda to do that. I'm going to ask trustee Archuleta to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
For your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call?
Irma Archuleta?
Present.
Virginia Baxter?
Here.
Jeff Kellogg?
Oh, trustee Kellogg is on the way. In fact, we've asked, he had meetings in San Diego this afternoon, called us, told us he would be late. We tried to get our technical assistance people to put a map up here so we could watch his progress as he got here, but they said way beyond their pay grade or something. We don't have that software. So, he's not here. Go ahead, Jackie. Kellogg?
Jeff Kellogg will be late, yes. Doug Otto?
Here.
And Sunny Zia?
Sunny is on vacation and will be back at the next meeting. So, Agenda Item 1.4, Approval of the Minutes of the May 10th Regular Meeting of the Board of Trustees. I entertain a motion?
移到 Move.
Any comments? Roll call vote?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg is absent, and Sunny Zia?
Okay. Introductions and special announcements. I know we have several. So, Superintendent President Oakley, can you help us out?
Yes. We do have several, and it's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to highlight our students, our faculty, or staff, as well as retirees. And we have all of the above today. First, I want to welcome and recognize the 2016 men's volleyball state champions are here with us this evening. I know that they're starting to feel like the Yankees because they keep on going to the championship and win it most years, but it's always a pleasure to have men's volleyball back here to honor. And to do that, I want to ask our athletic director, Randy Tuttorp, to say a few words. I know our coach couldn't be here this evening, but filling in, filling in for him is our former men's volleyball coach, Randy Tuttorp. So Randy, why don't you introduce the team?
Board President Otto, members of the board, and President Oakley, thank you for this opportunity. It is my pleasure to introduce this high-achieving group of student athletes. On April 30th, our men's volleyball program won a state-leading ninth state championship, as noted. So, most state championships by a program of all colleges competing. We're very proud of the coaching staff and all the student athletes and support pieces that are involved in that. To win a state championship, it's not something that just happens. It really does start with a vision, starts with a leader in the program, and then a lot of hard work by the student athletes. So, we're really here today to recognize all of that. As noted, Coach Jonathan Charette, he's a pretty hard-working guy. He tore his Achilles a few days ago, so not able to be here. I asked Coach Charette to write something up, so I'm going to read a statement on his behalf. So, this is from Coach Jonathan. "I just want to thank the board for recognizing the men's volleyball program and our recent success. It is an honor to represent this great institution through the platform of volleyball. This past season, these young men were able to produce a win streak of 21 wins in a row, which earned them a Western State Conference Championship and a state championship. I contribute the success to our amazing support staff, our athletic department, athletic trainers, and our academic advisors who allow the team to compete at its highest level. Also want to thank Long Beach City College District for providing student support service opportunities that allowed our team to be successful on and off the court. This year, we were able to achieve 100 percent matriculation. All six of our sophomores will be moving on to four-year universities to continue their education in volleyball careers." I'm going to read the six sophomores at this time. Charles Belvin will be transferring to Hope International University. Dior Rodriguez, Hope International University. You're going to hear a theme here. There's a local college that was very intelligent in their recruiting. Austin Amian, Hope International University. Joshua Nels, Hope International University. Caesar Renteria has a backup offer right now to Hope, but is also entertaining opportunity at Cal State Long Beach. And then Jordan Molina will be transferring to Long Beach State. Again, Coach Charette wants to thank everyone for this recognition and says, "Go Vikings." So, at this time, what I'd like to do is actually bring up the captain of the volleyball team to say a few words in honoring of this year's championship. So, Jordan, can you come on up?
Hello, board. I'm Jordan Molina, captain of the friendly guys behind me. Few things about our team is that we had a great group of guys this year. Something that we learned together was that we can really accomplish anything through just having a bond, and that's what really Coach John and the rest of the coaching staff really put their heads together for. I think they focused that through half of our season. Like Coach John said, we had a 21-win streak, which was pretty amazing, and I think that's one of the best things we could have accomplished besides winning state. Yeah, playoffs was pretty intense. We were actually down two, or we were down both games, and we came back to win in both matches through our bond, not just our, or with heart and hard work, not just, you know, talent. So, I think it's a really special thing for all of us here to be able to play here and represent Long Beach City College as a team. So, on behalf of the guys and the rest of Long Beach City's men's volleyball program, I'd like to say thank you for this acknowledgement.
I do want to point out, men's volleyball, I always take this opportunity any time I can. Men's volleyball at our level, if you haven't been to a match, is an extremely high level of play. So, when we're talking about transferring to these four-year universities and competing at that level, and the athletes that continue to have that success, we're talking about a very high level of this sport. And, you know, that semifinal championship level is an extremely talented group of individuals. So, once again, it's a huge accomplishment by our team. I'm going to actually put the rest of them on the spot and have them come up here real quick and introduce themselves. So, and fortunately and unfortunately, Tuesday night is a night that we don't compete, so we have a lot of our athletes that are in class tonight not able to make it.
Hello, my name's Eli Mama.
Hello, guys. Thank you for having us. And my name is Constanto Lantino.
Hello, board. My name is Neil Tysonow, and I play libero.
Hello, board. My name is Charles Belvin, and I'm an opposite.
Hello, board. My name is Melbi Perez, and I'm a setter.
Good evening. My name is Jase Ashman, and I'm a setter.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Escobillo, and I just want to say thank you for having us and acknowledging us this evening. Thank you.
Aspen Aldees, Amelia Garcia, and I'm a middle blocker.
Randy, why don't you have them come on up here, and we'll make sure and take a picture in front of the board members.
While you're coming up, how many of you went to a Long Beach High School? Most of you? Or, oh, okay, just curious. Should we go down there, Eloy?
No, they'll be taller than us.
Jerome, do you want us up here or down there?
Okay.
We're taller up here.
I'm short.
You want to get on my shoulders?
Yeah. Oh.
All right, come down.
All right, we're coming down.
I know.
You have one question before you leave, Randy.
So, let the board members get back up here, but could you just describe the championship games to us briefly about how it was, what happened, and what made us state champions?
Yeah, you know, and in fact, as I was coming here, I was thinking, man, I should have brought a video because it was very exciting to watch. Again, I can't express the level of play at that level. You know, throughout a year, the parity that exists is very good, it's very competitive, but our program, as duly noted by President Oakley, has been very successful for a long time now. And so, throughout the season, they certainly know that there are nights where the challenges aren't quite as high. When you get into playoffs and those final teams for a conference championship, it is very intense competition. To witness, and I've been to a lot of, I've been in a lot of volleyball moments, and I got to tell you firsthand that this was one of the most exciting semifinals and finals that I've ever been a part of. The semifinal night, I think there are multiple times where, as Jordan mentioned, the team was down. And in volleyball, if you give up, if you're down by five or six points, you know, sometimes early in a set, it's very difficult to come back because every play is a point. And volleyball is a game of mistakes, so mistakes happen a lot, and a lot of times teams will just side out. And if you give up five, six, seven points, next thing you know, you're going to lose by 25, 20, 25, 19. So, our team was very resilient, and I think it really reflected on them all year. They showed an extreme level of poise. They never really got, you could never see them get down in a match or in a game, and when you would think they should. I mean, there was times all season where they would be down seven, eight points. And I'm, if you ever saw me coach, I'm kind of crazy. I would, I even went in and talked to him a few times. I said, "I don't, kudos to Coach John. He's the right coach for you guys. He can handle this, this level of just poise that they would display, not getting down, staying very focused, very unemotional." And just bit by bit, you could see them change the momentum, and they did it time and time again. You can't win 21 games in a row without that level of discipline and poise. So, in the semifinals, it was the same thing. They'd be down maybe six, seven points in a set. Golden West was who we played in the semifinal match, and you could see their momentum building, and our guys just stayed in it, and then it just chipped away, chipped away, and then they would get hot and come back and just demoralize their opponent. And they just did it over and over again until they put themselves in a position to be successful and win that match. Same thing happened in the finals. And again, I know that we love beating Golden West and Orange Coast, so it was very sweet to compete against Golden West where they thought they were going to win, us take it back away from them in a thrilling five-set match. And quite honestly, in the fourth set, I think it was against Golden West, maybe they'll correct me, I think we were down 23, 19 in the fourth set. This is, this is match points, like two points away for Golden West. We came up with a crazy point that we won, still had to go back and serve and put yourself in a position. And again, when you're in a championship moment, and you're down by three, and all the other team has to do is, you know, you're going to make one error, and they're a point away from winning the match. That's a pretty tight condition to play in. They just did it point by point until they tied it, and then you could just feel it. It was, okay, we're going to win. These guys have done this all year, and that's exactly what they did. They got to that fifth set somehow. I was actually sitting next to the dean AD at Golden West and just obviously happy for what happened for us. And then we get in that fifth set, and, you know, they just took over. Their conditioning, their training, their discipline all year, you know, there was never a doubt in the fifth set against Golden West that we weren't going to win that. And it's really complemented, again, their discipline and their preparation. And Orange Coast, same idea, came back, you know, in the, and this time, we were leading, so a little bit less pressure, but we came back in the fourth set when it looked like we were going to go to five, and they came back and won, and it was just an amazing volleyball match to watch. So, a lot of fun. I highly encourage you to come out next year. Hopefully, I'll put in a bid to host again so that we can just have it very easy on campus. But it's a very exciting sport to watch, and again, at that level, it's a very, a lot of talent out there on the court. So, be careful what you ask. It's my sport. You know, I'm going to go on and on.
Thank you so much. Additional introductions?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Randy. We want to stow another honor, another recognition, this time to one of our faculty members who has been serving the state through the statewide academic senate for the last several years, most recently as a statewide senate president, Mr. David Morse. I want to take a moment to just recognize his, not only his service, but the achievements of the statewide academic senate over the last few years. They've truly been leading the way in the state, a partner with the chancellor's office, a partner with the entire state system to move us forward. And so, we have a plaque for him today that I'd like to give to Board President Otto to present to Dr. Morse for his service. And this is also good news for us because it means he's coming back in the fall. We're going to take the summer to break him back in, get him used to being back on campus, but we'll expect to see him more often. So, with that, I will hand this over to you, Board President Otto, so you can present it to Dr. Morse on the board's behalf.
You know, it's, I asked for the opportunity to provide this plaque to David. I have watched him up and down the state the last couple of years. He's a perpetual, in perpetual motion, and would tell us about it on Facebook. And I'm here now, I'm going there, I'm, but what he's done, I think what he's accomplished is not only recognized by his colleagues because they elected him to a second term as president, but he had his hands in everything, and I watched him, he did a magnificent job. I saw him at Consultation Council, I saw him at the state academic senate in their plenary session not too long ago. I call him for advice about what's going on, both at a statewide level and what it means for us. And I'm sorry to lose that day-to-day perspective, but honored that you're going to come back and be back with us at Long Beach. So, on behalf of the board and really the college, I want to present you with this plaque and congratulate you on your tremendous service, and hope that we'll get to see you doing the same things here in Long Beach.
As you make your way back up, Board President Otto, the next recognition that we have is, most recently, the Long Beach College Promise Steering Group met to have a wonderful event over at Cal State Long Beach, and they recognize a couple of individuals from Long Beach City College as College Promise Champions. And I want to take a moment to recognize both of them. One of them could not be here today, but Dr. Jenny Mackay and Dr. Eva Bag were recognized by the group for their outstanding work in support of and to advance the Long Beach College Promise. So, congratulations to them both. I know Eva is here. Congratulations, Eva.
I was actually at that ceremony, and it was so special because this was representatives from all the stakeholders, Long Beach Unified, Cal State Long Beach, Long Beach City College, and the city of Long Beach, who have worked long and hard over these last eight, almost nine years, to make the Long Beach College Promise what it is. And they decided to recognize five individuals who they considered champions of the Long Beach College Promise. And Jenny and Eva were specially recognized. Everybody knows what they've put into the efforts to make the Long Beach College Promise a success, not just time, not just effort, but knowledge, thinking it through carefully to make sure it is. And so, we honor you with our support, with, it was a wonderful opportunity to see how everyone in that room realized what you've done, Eva, and how much you've contributed. So, thank you.
We want to again recognize a few individuals who are, have decided to retire and who will be leaving Long Beach City College after many, many, many years of service. So, I want to take a moment to recognize them. First, Lynn Ann Utley. It's taken me a while to, to switch to Utley, but Lynn has been working here for hard-to-believe 30 years. I think she was 12 when she started. But she has served this college for a long time as a graphic design specialist. She will be retiring over the summer and going off to live another wonderful chapter of her life. It's been a pleasure having you with us, Lynn, so congratulations on your retirement. And now, why don't you come on up? We have a nice certificate for you, which you probably designed. Also retiring is, although we have, all of our reading department is outstanding, one very outstanding reading professor who has served the college for 21 years, Joanne Blor is retiring, and she will be very much missed. She's been an outstanding member of the reading department, a very caring member of our faculty, and truly has been dedicated to supporting our students here at Long Beach City College. So, I want to personally thank her for her work and congratulate her on her retirement. Joanne, why don't you come on up?
here at Long Beach City College, starting out in the Learning Center at PCC, and then went through Economic Development, thank you, Luann, and had a great number of years there, running the Tech Center for the vocational programs and Workplace Learning Resource Center, and then more wonderful years as a faculty member in the reading department. And could not have asked for better colleagues, not only in the reading department, but through all the committee work that I've done, I have met the most caring individuals who do so much for our students to help them reach their goals, and for that, I am very thankful. Thank you for my years here.
And then last but certainly not least, and I don't see him here this evening, but Donald Wasson is retiring. He has served us as a professor of public services.
Tired last year.
He has, what's that? Don has, as I said, served us for 26 years, and he has decided to retire. So, we wanted to congratulate him and thank him for his 26 years of service and his dedication to the students of Long Beach City College. So, let's give Don a round of applause on his retirement. That's all I have.
Agenda item 1.6, Reordering of the Agenda. I've had no request to reorder any of the agenda, so we will keep on keeping on.
Good evening, Superintendent President. Good evening, Board President Otto, members of the board, and members of the public. So, I want to start off by thanking you all for your continued support. We would not be able to, we would not have been able to accomplish all that we accomplished this year without the help of the administration and the faculty. I want to give my personal thanks to our advisor, Camille Bolton, for stepping in this semester and being amazing, and just the opportunity to serve our student body. I've been here for a couple of years now, and my growth and development has, has been at the same level of growth as the college. I started here not really interested. I started here challenged, and I feel like I'm leaving here a better student. Fortunately, this year in the ASB cabinet, we were able to accomplish some resolutions that were supported by the SSCCC. We worked on engaging the student population, so we had a 400 student increase in our voter, our voter turnout this year, which I think is spectacular, from 300 to almost 800. It was about 400, about 450 students that voted. And so, just that alone just shows that the level of engagement is increasing from this year to last year, and I hope that that carries over with next year's cabinet as well. We are going to be having our final meeting this week on the 27th in this very, in this very boardroom. So, if anybody's interested in attending, please do so. And I would like to personally thank you all for allowing us to be in this boardroom. It elevates our status as student leaders, and it shows how important the work here that we do on campus is. Unfortunately, I don't think the incoming ASB president is here. His name is Eric Mazurigos, and he's going to be attending shortly. But he's a great student leader. I've had, I've had the chance to work with him within the club system, and I've seen him grow and develop into, into somebody that's going to be admirable and is going to lead the charge next year for the student government. And I'm just happy to say that it's in good hands, and that with your continued support, I know that we can strive. Thank you all.
Thank you. Public comments on Agenda Items. We have one, Janey Hunn. Speaking on the subject of ratification of the tentative agreement.
Good evening.
That doesn't mean your time's up.
Okay. So, good evening, President Oakley.
So, good evening, President Oakley, Board of Trustees, Administration, faculty, staff, students, and anyone in the Long Beach community. So I just predict a very favorable results from our tentative agreement vote, which will be counted tomorrow afternoon. And the vote closes tomorrow at 3:00 PM. And I have informed President Oakley that I will call him once the vote is counted. And I believe this is a good example of a win-win scenario. It's a win for faculty. For all faculty will receive a salary increase if the TA is ratified, and our retiring faculty will receive a nice incentive payout at the end of their career here. It's also a win for the district. The district will save money in the long run from this agreement, and definitely our district does a really good job of saving money. But it's also a win-win for our students, and just reminding us all that the working conditions of our faculty are the learning conditions of our students. Thanks.